Good evening and welcome to the North Idaho College August 29th, 2012 Board of Trustees Meeting. As you can tell, it's a little bit different filming tonight. We're typically upstairs, but due to student activities on our first week of school, we are in the cozy confines of the Driftwood Bay Room. So with that, I'd like to convene the meeting and I'd also like to have everybody join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a verification of quorum, so we have all five board members here tonight. And introduction of any guests, I believe, will come later. We have a lot of people in the room, so those will be introduced as time goes on. At this point in time, I'd like to have approval of the minutes from the previous two meetings. That's actually the approval for the minutes for the June 27th meeting and also the August 3rd meeting. Is there a motion in the second for the approval of the minutes?
Mr. Chair, I make that motion.
Motion's been made, so a second?
Second.
Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. At this point in time, I'd like to have our new president, which is your first meeting tonight, congratulations, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Have Joe Dunlap introduce some of our new vice presidents, which we have quite a new team here on campus, so we might have to wear name tags for a while. But Joe, it's yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We do have several new individuals and I'd like to introduce them this evening. First of all, I'd like to introduce Grayden Stanley, who is our new Vice President of Student Services. And Grayden comes to us from CSI, where he was the Dean for Student Services. So Grayden, welcome, we're very pleased to have you here.
Thank you very much, glad to be here.
Next, we have our new Vice President of Instruction, that's Dr. Lita Burns. And Dr. Burns was the Dean for Health Sciences. She rose to the top of the competition and was selected for the new Vice President position, and we're very glad to have Lita in that position. So, Lita, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We also have a new Executive Director for Human Resources, and Laura Hill is here. Laura, go ahead and raise your hand. Laura Hill comes to us from the Rockwood Clinics in Spokane, Washington, where she was the Director of Human Resources. And she's been on board for a few weeks herself, so Laura, welcome, we're very pleased to have you here. Also, I'd like to mention that because Lita moved up to the VPI position, we have hired an interim Dean of Health Sciences, and that is Christie Doyle out of Spokane Community College. She couldn't be here this evening, but we will introduce her at the next board meeting. And then lastly, I would like to thank Dr. Jim Perez for his service as interim VP of Instruction and then also VP of Student Services. And he's the one who helped keep the wheels on the wagon over the last several months. So Jim, thank you for your service to the college. That's all the introductions, Mr. Chair.
That's a lot. The one thing I have heard is because of some new faces and some getting acquainted, there's a new energy on campus. And it's always exciting to see the students show up, but when you have a lot of new students and a lot of new administration people, it really brings a new excitement and new ideas and new culture to the campus, so we do welcome you. Next on the agenda is something that's always a very fun part of our board meetings, and that's celebrating success. And one of the things we always like to look at as a board is the things that are happening on campus, that are programs or initiatives that are really different or outstanding that get a little more recognition for those kinds of programs. And tonight, we'd like to recognize the Graphic Design Program, and I'm going to turn it over to Philippe to have five minutes.
That's going to be a challenge. Ten years in the making. So, Mr. Chair, trustees, Mr. President, invited guests, our great employers, our previous students that returned to us, thank you for being here. On behalf of the Graphic Design Student Faculty, I'd like to thank you for the great opportunity to present to you ten years of great success at NIC. We want to provide a brief overview, since we have five minutes, about our achievement within this time limit. Since the event is now televised, we'll be able to reach a wider audience than just the small audience today, and this is good news to reach beyond the NIC walls. Impossible is not French, so allow me to show you a quick video produced by our students, thirty seconds.
Shot one, take one.
I've been a Graphic Design student here at the North Idaho College for the last couple of years, and I've moved on to taking complex, real-life jobs with paying clients because of the skills that I learned at North Idaho College.
What you just saw was one of the parts in a piece that was awarded nationally on ADI Award, and the last piece was done by Ronald Maskey with a partnership with SWX for the NGCA Championship. Jilly was instrumental in giving this assignment to us, and we succeeded. So, let me start with this, different years, different students, same results. So that's the slogan that we hear often in our new updated Graphic Design Program in Paul's Fall and near the Workforce Training Center. As our slogan suggests, we're very proud of our program, and our students, they're here today, who continue to win local and national recognition, competing against four-year universities in graphic design, video production, and web design. And an important measure of our success is a very positive response we get from employers. They are here today, they hire our students, our students stays in the community. They're such in demand that our students gain employment, full employment, before graduation. Thankfully to those employers, they help them to finish their degree, so they have a partnership with us. Talking about degree, we offer three distinctive degrees, a certificate in graphic design, an AAS in graphic design, and our new AAS in web design, which is very successful right now. So, let's take a look at what we do, it's pretty straightforward. We want to give students the skills so they can get jobs. The students are here, all have jobs, and they also hire our students. That's just a win-win situation for us. Why are we successful? Well, I'm surrounded by the team of very good teachers that work in the business world. They do that day in, day out. They bring their project to the classroom, it provides a practical enrollment learning that is very unique. We're very media-centered, I showed you a couple more examples of video, but I'm going to go further, and what do we do at the national level? Different student, different year, same results. I'm also a part of NIC with my colleague Kathy O'Brien, I'd like to honor, she's been a great leader in Business Professionals America, and we compete against universities and colleges. Every single year, we win awards, so let me give you, and you have this in your little packet, but I'd like to kind of briefly tell you what we have done. We finished first in the nation in web design last year in Chicago. We finished second in video production in Chicago. We finished first in desktop publishing, we finished first in graphic design. This is in your packet, so I know we have limited time, you can take a look at the result. So, a little thing that we like to do, we're very driven to the community, and I have to honor Lita Byrne here, because in 2007, she came to our program, and she asked me, could your student design a logo for Art Shot? It's a soccer tournament, it's there, name after the Bills of Winter, and I have two people from the Art Shot that came here today. And for the last few years, we've designed logos for them, and the sale of the proceeds are very, very good for the club. This is the one from the past year, 2012, so long partnership with them. Recently, you've seen an animation, what we can do in video, we'll also do it on print, the National NGCA Tournament, Wrestling Tournament, they're coming back in 2014, so we will be glad to help them again. Recently, Stephen, who's here in the audience, was awarded $750 for design for the Collin Mine, Collin City Mining Contest. The Kellogg area is very in a difficult time right now, they found the money to pay the students, so that's a commitment they have. I'd like to wave to you a couple of things, you know, first place in the nation, that's kind of cool. What else? ADI Award, Joe Ingalls was over there, finished first in LA, and he was first in graphic design, first in video production, his dad was there, that was really cool. And then, first in web design last year in Chicago, that's pretty cool, especially for a brand-new program. But the thing that I'd like to share with you to wrap up, and is to show our first student gold ADI Award. They compete nationally with this, and then of course, we have many silver ADIs, and they're all here in the audience. So, this is a little bit what we do, but let's wrap up, since we have a great speaker after me. You probably remember that, this sort of thing here, we created this. This is the image. Steve Graffith gave us this assignment, it was about AD Design, they picked this one, and the beauty of it, the student that created this logo, because our degree is actually fully transferable, he transferred to SCAD, Small Little University in Georgia, and our student transfer to four-year university if they want to. Our degree is fully transferable. This is something you need to know. And then, the beauty of it, we have students that come back to the program, because we updated the program, they come back to us and get retrained. So, the employers that are here can talk more about it, but first thing that I should have done is to thank a few people, because this is the time. I want to thank you, Board of Trustees, for helping us moving to Riverbend. That was really good for us, to be in the business, in the business sector. I would like to thank Jilly, our Vice President, his instruction was instrumental. I will not thank enough Bob Murray, I will never thank enough Bob Murray for his assistance. I will never thank enough Max Mendez, and I will not thank enough our instructional department, as well as the Technology Department to help us be there, as well as the physical plant. But last but not least, Ber Sire, thank you so much for your help at Riverbend. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. So, in wrapping up, I'd like to invite the board to come and see our student in action, and you can talk to them in the classroom, you see what wonder they do. So, we want to be the best program on the planet, and we're going to be there. Thank you so much for the opportunity you've given us today.
Philippe, we love your passion, so we do have some questions for you.
Actually, Philippe, what I would like to do is, I know you have a number of people who you thanked and who have been involved in your programs that are here tonight, but I'd like you to ask all those to stand who have been involved in this.
Oh, we're standing, then.
We got them all standing already? Good. Well, I want to give them a hand, thank you very much.
Any other questions for Philippe?
Just comment, Mr. Chair, it's so exciting for you to come and tell us all of the awards and accolades that are so richly deserved, and like Mick started off the meeting, this is always our favorite part of the board meeting. And thank you, Philippe, and I'll take you up on your offer, I want to come out and see everything.
Yeah, and we'll show you the video we can show, such as the video that Lori Otter asked us to do for the Met Project, Senator Crepeau asked us about labor and industry, I mean, we have plenty, I mean, you probably have more time than today, so yes, we invite you to come and visit and see a student in action. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Philippe, it's always interesting to see the projects you turn out for various other organizations within the community. I know there's a lot of others that you haven't discussed, but you just do a wonderful...
Since you asked. Since you asked, I mean, you know, Excel Foundation, they raised $371,000, that was great, we did all the marketing for them, you know.
It's amazing what you guys do for the benefit of this community, and I think sometimes we don't recognize that or we take it for granted. So, once again, thank you for your program, for your participation, and for your passion.
You have to thank the students, they're the best, they're the best.
It trickles down, I'm sure.
Thank you so much.
Other questions for Philippe? Thank you very much, appreciate it.
You're very welcome, thank you.
Next up on the agenda is a presentation from Mark Cotner for K-Tech.
Mind if I take the film medal? Is that okay? Is that okay? There was not enough time, Mark, to tell, there was not enough time, so I'm sorry. We need to calm down.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Dunlap, I appreciate the opportunity to come speak before you again this evening. Before I get started, I'd like to, for what it's worth, express my gratitude to your selection of the new president and his staff that's come on board. Very excited to have them a part, they've been out on our new campus, spending quite a bit of time out there, building partnerships and relationships, and glad to have you on board with us, so. With that, I'll give you a little quick update on K-Tech, where we're at. We had our grand opening Monday evening, somewhere between 300 and 500 folks there, and many of you were there as well, and I didn't see everybody because the room ran out over, we were standing outside. The only thing that surpassed that was last night, we had the orientation for staff, or for, excuse me, for students and their parents. And I guess that was overwhelming, all I can say is wow, we scheduled that in two shifts. Closest numbers that I've got, we had somewhere between 1,500 and 1,600 people on campus last night. Truly, we filled the campus and lined the street out in front, and it was very rewarding to see the participation and the expectations of these students and their parents, as they talked about goals, and we talked about the vision of K-Tech and how that works with NIC, and I was able to share some of the partnerships that we're beginning to expand upon with the programs here. An update on enrollment, we're still somewhere right around 500 students. We are at capacity, we had around 1,000 students enroll. Just to give you a little idea, so you can plan on this end, where to expect students coming, I think I've reported to you before, over 350 of the 1,000 were in the medical-related fields. My past experience tells me that the majority of those students that enter the nursing field do go on to post-secondary education, many of them right out of high school, so I would try to plan in that direction. Automotive diesel technology, again, we have in excess of 130 students enrolled in auto diesel. We have in the engineering program, we have around 100 students enrolled in that, again, many of those students will come on to NIC for multiple program areas. Pretty much in all of our programs, we are full, we are overfull, and every time I try to squeeze one more in, because I'm not doing a good job of saying, no, I can't let you in, and so. Mr. Chairman, with that, I'll stand for any questions that you might have. I did want to wrap up, though, with I appreciate the participation of NIC with K-Tech. I want to extend my gratitude to not only you folks, but to this community for allowing me to be a part of this process, so.
Thank you, Mark. Questions for Mark? Ron.
I just want to say that being there for the ribbon cutting was an awesome experience, and of course, without you, it wouldn't have been the experience it was, and we appreciate everything you're doing for this community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Other comments? Judy.
In recognition of the good attendance you had, it reminded me, and I've had sent out to all of our board members, and you may want it as well, Mark, the State Board of Education has a fact book for 2012, and in that fact book, on page two, talks about the 60% goal, which meshes so well with what you're doing, and that is that the state has agreed that as a goal, State Board, therefore, community colleges, Complete College America, which says that by 2020, or thereabouts, the state's goal is to have all the citizens between the ages of 24 and 34 have post-secondary certification of some kind. And so, you're helping get folks into at least the beginning stages of that. I think it behooves us as compatriots in the process, then, to be sure we're ready to receive all the students that you're getting tuned up. And I know you identified the other day, many of those folks will want to be finishing, getting some credentials, and then going to work, but many of them will need to and will want to return. And I would highlight to the board, this study, I think, is very effective at reminding us what our charge is here as a board for helping our president get ready for some great progress that you've made.
Chairman, Board Member Meyer, if I could respond to that. Again, I always address that, as education's a highway, and I think we always need to keep that in mind. Got a lot of entrance and exit ramps, some of these students will exit education, go right to work, it doesn't mean that at some point, a year, or two, or five years down the road, they re-enter workforce. One of the things that I'm going to be calling Mike Myers this week to try to set up on our campus, a parent and student night for NIC to come out and do enrollments in our articulation, and I want the parents to be involved with that, students to be involved with that, and understand that seamless system of education that we've put together, so that, you know, whether that's right out of high school or five years down the road, we've put the plan in place for students to move on, so.
Ken.
Mark, let me thank you for the courtesy and the generosity you've extended to us. You gave us a tour, some of us, a couple weeks ago, and then again yesterday, or the, when you had the ribbon cutting ceremony, it was a nice ceremony. And you are impressed as you see this, how you have the promise to fill up a pipeline that's headed out to higher education, as well as into industry and that sort of thing. And so, I know the challenges ahead of you to make sure that that's a great success, but everything you've done so far really promises that that will be a great success, and so we look forward to continuing to work with you. And I know Mike Myers and a number of people here at NIC have contributed, I think, to getting you off and started, and hopefully, we'll be able to continue cooperating with you in terms of making you a success out there, so please feel free to call on us as you see fit.
Mark, I guess it's just fitting on the fact that you are now going to officially be open for school here in about another week, and, you know, it's interesting to think back on some of the history of K-Tech, and, you know, I know you came in kind of as it was being built, but great history between North Idaho College and the community and the school districts, and then the Manufacturers Consortium, too, all came along. And I think that history is just a good indicator of where we're going to go in the future. You know, we, many years ago, as a board, looked at, you know, the option on the land with the Myers, and the idea that the campus would be located there, and it would be a cooperative campus between the schools and the, and North Idaho College. And now that it's completed, and it's going to be opening, I think it's just a testament to all the hard work of so many different people. And I think that was one of the things, I wasn't able to make the ribbon cutting, but from what I could see, that was one of the things that was really brought out there, that this was something that was not any small group, this was a very large group, and very much across all three school districts and all three, all the communities, to make this come to fruition. So, congratulations to all, I think it was something that was a vision for many, and now that vision is reality, so congratulations to you to be part of that.
Thank you, sir, and anybody that wasn't able to make the tour or the grand opening, extend the opportunity for a personal tour through there, and be glad to do that at any point, so please come out, spend some time with us, and we'll continue to grow those partnerships.
And Ron and I and Ken did the personal tour, and I will tell you, if you haven't done it, it's worth watching Mark show his passion, it's obvious. Thank you, Mark.
So, the next tour, are we going to see sparks flying in the welding unit, are we?
We will, sir. We brought welders in this week, we've got students showing up on Tuesday. I want to say a personal thank you to our staff. If I've only done one thing right, I hired the right people, and them and their families showed up this weekend, we didn't get furniture until Friday night. I don't know if you realize that, if you were out there for open house, it didn't look like it then, but we, they pulled it together very quickly. We, again, are looking forward to sharing equipment back and forth at the NIC, Mike has extended that, and we've already actually moved some equipment over, and so, pretty impressive program, and I'm trying real hard not to preach at you this evening, because I, I'm actually running out of gas, I think, we've had a couple of 14-hour days, and so, you're probably getting the best side of me tonight, but I'll make up for it next time.
Appreciate it, thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
We have constituent reports next, and it's always fun to start the school year, because we see new faces, some carryovers, some new. So to start with, we have ASNC, we're going to start, and I see reversed order this time around this year, so we're...
And Mr. Chair, Julie Salinas is our new ASNC President, and she brought with her some of her officers as well.
Perfect, thank you.
You guys would like to introduce yourself?
How do you do, sir? I'm Joey Penion, Vice President of Student Body Government.
And where are you from?
I'm originally from West Bay, California.
Okay, and what are you going to school here for?
Studying, yeah.
Oh, I'm studying for a dual major in psychology and criminal justice.
Thank you.
My name's Josh Swan, I'm a Senator on the board this year.
From?
I am from North Idaho, is the best way to put it. Paul's Falls, Kingston, St. Mary's, Coeur d'Alene now, I've been all over, so it's hard to pinpoint one.
And you're studying?
I'm currently just doing general studies, I thought I had it figured out, but then I hit the inevitable, you're going to change your mind, so, trying to decide now.
Great.
My name's Joffe Brans, I'm a Senator.
From?
Keep going.
I'm in the Coeur d'Alene area, same as Joffe. Being in Coeur d'Alene, both malls right now, is more familiar. I plan on pursuing film production.
Another one for Philippe.
And I'm Julie, I'm from Wolver Washington, a little tiny now, and my major is communications journalism. All right. Good evening, Chairman, Trustees, Dr. Dunlap, and guests. Thank you for allowing time for ASNC to give a report. This summer, we sent several of our members to leadership conferences. Senators Menzies, Brans, and Dean went to the NACA Student Government Conference in Denver, Colorado, where they compared our student government to many other schools, and attended workshops focusing on leadership. They shared their experience with the rest of the board, and will use their knowledge they learned on our Senate. Senator Swan and I had the opportunity to travel to Columbia, Missouri, to attend ILEED, which is the Institute for Leadership Education and Development. Josh and I had an amazing week, learning more about ourselves and leadership, and will continue to send students every summer. Last year, we elected all of our officers in the spring, giving us the opportunity to start training and meetings before school started. During our retreat, we came up with two core themes to pursue throughout the school year. Communication, which includes ASNC's communication with the student body, and the college's role in communicating with students. Student life and diversity, which includes projects and events to help foster community on campus. Two major projects that we identified is the possibility of a rec center and building school spirit. We held our first public meeting yesterday where we passed two resolutions. We are committed to being the representatives of the student body, as well as being engaged on campus through committees, projects, and listening to what the students want. Through our leadership, we hope to facilitate the students' voice to you, the board, and other leaders on campus. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Questions?
Oh, Mr. Chair, is, every year we get to have a, I guess, a one-on-one with ASNC, is that going to be planned again this year?
Yes, this is.
Great, all right. Thank you.
He's put it on the spot. Way to go.
Okay, sorry.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Julie, we look forward to more presentations in the future. Staff Assembly, Gary.
Hey, Mr. Chair, Gary Stark is our new Staff Assembly Chair, and so we welcome him to this new role.
Yeah, but he actually made a presentation a couple times last year, so we got a precursor.
All right, good evening, Chairman Mick, Trustees, President Dunlap, Mark Lyons, and Shannon Goodrich to my right. My report for Staff Assembly, we had a meeting on August 9th. We had a special guest, Cara Carleton, from the CSA, which is Community Supported Agriculture. I was calling it the Community Garden, and she kept telling me, no, it's CSA. So, she gave us an update of how that process works and the schedule, and right now, they're a little short on funds, but they do have an outfit that's bringing in dirt. in dirt, and they're going to be doing irrigation. It kind of sounds like a spring startup for the CSA. And if you guys have any questions on that, they have a website. It's www.localsharvest.com. We also decided to do a food drive just this last week for the Post Falls Food Bank. And I think it might have been Stacy Hudson that brought to our attention that they were really short on food. So, Staff Assembly put that out, and we actually brought in 571 pounds of food and some cash. I took it out there, I think it was Tuesday, and Sherry Wallace runs that out there, and she was really excited by that. And I also wanted to mention, there was a guy working out there, John Smiley, and he yelled across the warehouse to me, he says, "Hey, I just want you to tell everybody from NIC, I want to thank them from the bottom of my heart." And I just felt the love that I had for that place. So, it was really cool. I felt bad for everybody in NIC that didn't get to get that feeling, but it was really cool. Lastly, we are in the process of making sure that all the committee assignments are filled. And our next meeting is September 13th at noon in the Blue Creek Bay Room. So, are there any questions?
Questions for Gary?
Sure. Ken?
Gary, on the Community Roots Program, and it's probably not going to get started until next spring, but, you know, at a time, point in time that you think it's appropriate, do you think maybe Cara could come in and give us some kind of a report on what they expect to do next year, so we get kind of a little bit of lead?
Yeah, that would be great. I know the stuff that she was talking about, she wanted to get with Lita, probably, and talk about how they can use that space as a learning environment, too, for the NIC students and faculty, so.
It'd be kind of nice to get an idea of what they expect to do and what the program might be out there, actually, in advance of it. They're hitting the ground next spring, so.
Well, we can talk to her and maybe put her on the agenda, so it'd be great. Anything else?
Any other questions for Gary? Thank you, sir. Backly Assembly, Kathy.
Good evening, Board Chair, President Dunlap, members of the board, and honored guests. I know you're excited to see some new faces, but you're going to have to put up with the old face tonight.
Experienced face.
We are feeling the energy that you hear about. We are so excited about this new school year, and faculty is very, very busy. This was our first week with students, so it's really always fun to have the students here. We have, this week is ad drops, there's a lot of changes, students who are needing to get their payments today, and there needs to be an attendance. There's a lot of things that faculty are dealing with in terms of new policies, new software, such as the Blackboard, which all of us are using for our learning management system now. So, there's a lot of great things going on. I want to congratulate you on the hire of President Dunlap. He has been amazing so far, so welcome.
Thank you.
And I look forward to working with you this next year. And just an example of something that was really great, I think it was today or yesterday, President Dunlap sent all of us that State Board of Education fact book. So, those kinds of communications from President Dunlap are very, very appreciated by the faculty, so we can keep in touch with what's going on at the state. So, thank you, and I hope we can continue that. We had lots of faculty involved in hiring committees this summer, lots and lots. And so, faculty were on campus, working and helping get everything ready for the fall. And I want to congratulate myself for being on the hiring committee for Dr. Lita Burns, so, good job, us. And also, welcome the rest of the new administration, and we're really excited to have you here. And I'm really happy to have stolen Grayden from CSI. I have some really good friends down there, so it's really nice to have you. Congratulations to Philippe Val. He's not here anymore, but congratulations and thank you for recognizing him and his I want to also say that this, that it was, has been my absolute pleasure working with Dr. Perez these last few months. Really, really an amazing human being, so thank you, Jim. And we are also, we haven't had a meeting yet. We will meet September 13th for our first time, but we've had a lot of communications. We are getting committees together, and that process will be finished next week. I'll get that information to Shannon, and that will be posted on the website. I've been working with President Dunlap and having faculty involved in some initiatives that are coming forward, so we're getting right on those. And I was able to meet with the new faculty and staff on Monday. What day is today? Like, the week before, whatever, Monday. And so, that was really nice for me to be able to touch base with them and kind of give them a heads up on kind of what to expect. And I lied to them a little bit, told them it was going to be really easy, but, you know. And Thursday, we had Professional Development Day. That was really amazing because we were able to get a lot of, some of the faculty staff, get some of that professional development under our belts before we start the semester. And I just have to give a shout-out to our staff. I have had some things happen in the last couple of weeks, and our Gary's peeps, Gary's staff, has really, have really been responsive. And I just have to say, I think our administrative support staff is the best in the world because they are the people that keep us, they keep us going. And this week for them is very difficult. So, people like Shannon, but people who are those department executive assistants, administrative assistants, they are really amazing people. So, I just want to give a shout-out to them from all of the faculty, and we really do appreciate them and thank them very much. And with that, I will tell you that our next meeting is September 13th, and we have invited President Dunlap and Vice President Burns to attend, so we're looking forward to that, and I will answer any questions.
Questions for Kathy.
Okay. Thank you.
Appreciate your report. And last up, John Totten from the Senate. Your first report. You could introduce him.
Yes, Mr. Chair, John Totten is the new chair for the College Senate. And so, this is his first report in this role, and...
Welcome.
Welcome, John.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. The Senate has not yet had a meeting. We will, we're planning on meeting tomorrow. This is a, this is a new experience for me. I've never chaired this group before, or any group of this type, for that matter. And so, I guess in an effort to just bring some of my own style, we're going to, we're going to go to the beach tomorrow as a group. And so, the, and the senators are going to come down, we're going to have ice cream, and we're just going to get to know each other a little bit. Having been on the Senate for the past three years, folks come in and out, and we're reading policy, and we're doing what we do, but we don't often get to know each other, or, so there's been a lot of, especially faculty members, pass through the Senate that I didn't know what they taught or how long they'd been here. And so, I think that you value the perspectives of folks if you can get to know them a little bit, know where they're coming from. And so, that's my mission tomorrow, to bring everybody together and just kind of break that ice and hopefully create a little bit of team unity as we, as we head into the semester. I've got a great group of folks put together, and just to echo what Chairman Arman and Kathy mentioned, the energy on this campus is as high as I felt it in the, this is my ninth year at NIC, and there were over 1,000 people in the backyard of the Student Union today, and they were just having fun, and they're so excited. And it's, it's really contagious, and I look forward to being a part of it this year as the Chair of the Senate. Any questions?
Questions for John?
Are we invited to the partner?
Absolutely, yes.
We need to get to know you better.
12:00 noon, all the ice cream sandwiches you can hold.
It's going to be 90, so you're not going to be able to hold them very long.
Yeah.
Any other questions for John? Look forward to future reports and working with you. Thank you. Executive Reports, Vice President of Resource Management, Ron Dorn.
Good evening.
So, each have 30 seconds, is that right, Mark?
If they can keep doing, I can keep doing. Board Chair, Board Members, good evening, and we have been pretty busy this summer. We're into the audit now, the preparation for the audit. The auditors are on campus within the next 10 days to perform that, their magic on that, which I'm sure it'll, it'll come out well for us. If not, this could be close to my last report, but I think it'll work out. I think it'll work out all right. We have also been working hard on implementation of the new budget software. This is the first cycle we've actually used it and done some of the internal reporting on that, and we'll do some of the forecasting off of the budget software, so I'm excited about that. I was proud to be a part of one of the search committees that hired Grayden. As you well, some of you know, Grayden and I worked together at the College of Idaho about 30, 30 years ago, yeah, when we were both a lot younger. So, I'm glad to have him on board and glad to be working with him again. Another thing we've done, our Direct Reports meeting that I hold each month, we took them out to the Area Office on Aging Site, and next month, we go out to the Harding Site so that our, my Direct Reports can, we can really understand what this division is and how many people are out there and what these other people do that we, that we don't get to see very often. We've done a lot of other things, but we have the preparing for the trustee election. And with the changes there, that's been interesting this year. You know, you always wish you could just do the same thing, do it quickly and be done with it, but when they consolidated, we've had a few changes which have been interesting for us, and I know for those of you that are running, so we look forward to that. But one of the things I'm really excited about is the amount of time I've been able to spend helping North Idaho College with the Outreach Center at Sandpoint. For me, living up there, but it's one of those projects that I'm really excited about. I see a strong future for that. I see growth up there. We met with Lewis Clark today in a meeting. I see, there's going to be a lot of cooperation, there are going to be four-year degrees up there, stronger than they are now, and that community is really, really excited about that. I serve on two committees up there. One is the Community University, and one is with the actual city officials and ex-city officials, and Joe was up there. It's just an exciting time. It's going to be an exciting time for this college, an exciting time for North Idaho, as is K-Tech. We have just another venture that's going to be good for North Idaho, good for the students and good for the college, so I'm really excited about that. And I do want to thank the board for hiring Joe. He's been great to work with. Created a great environment, and for those of us that are holdovers, heck of a lot of fun. It's a good way to, it's just a good way to transist and a good way for me to, you know, to spend my final years working for somebody, working with somebody like Joe. So, I thank you, board, for that selection process, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak, and I think I held it to two minutes, so thank you.
Questions for Ron? Anybody have questions? Thank you, Ron. Vice President of Instruction, how's that feel for you? Lita Burns.
Chairman Arman, members of the board, President Dunlap, it is a pleasure addressing you this first week of school, and I will reiterate what everyone else has said about the buzz on campus this week. It truly has been electrifying, having the students back on campus and the energy it provides for all of us. Since this is only my third day on the job, I'm sure that I'll be able to stick to the two-minute time limit because I don't have a lot to report. I would like to inform the board that the Ponderay Outreach Center has officially moved to NIC at Sandpoint, and on the first day of school, on Monday, they were holding classes at NIC at Sandpoint. When I went up to Sandpoint to visit the center on the first day of classes, it was interesting to me that the same energy I experienced here on Coeur d'Alene campus, I also experienced in Sandpoint. And I think it's because there is so much pride and so much excitement for the staff, the faculty, and the students to be in that new facility that's so spacious, so beautiful, and is going to provide such opportunity for growth. So, certainly, that, that energy was, was very consistent between the two campuses. I do want to acknowledge and recognize the hard work and effort that went in to making sure that that happened, and we were able to hold classes on, on the first day of school, recognizing e-learning and facilities and information technology. You know, they came together as a team this summer in a very short amount of time, and oh, not to, not fail to mention, the staff themselves at NIC at Sandpoint, I want to make sure I say the name correctly all the time, NIC at Sandpoint, that, that staff really worked hard this summer to make sure that on the first day, when the classes were being held here, they were also being held at Sandpoint. So, with that, I'm open for questions.
Questions for Lita.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Kristi.
Just a statement, well, we're so pleased for your third day, and I, I would like to thank Dr. Dunlap for finding such a qualified person. And clearly, you've earned this, and it's great when you can have someone from, from within the building or within the campus rise to the level that you've risen, and you've earned it, and we're proud of you, and thank you for being part of our team.
Thank you very much. It certainly is an honor to have been offered this position, and I will continue to work very, very hard for North Idaho College. I am so proud of this college and all that we've accomplished, and to be a part of this, this new team that has formed, it's a very exciting time for us.
I've had a few relatives and numerous friends that have gone through your nursing program, and they've always spoken very highly of you and the whole program. But now, to see you in this position where you have an impact on all of the students, we know you're the right person, and we're thankful to Dr. Dunlap for recognizing that.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you, Lita. Vice President for our Community Relations and Marketing, Mark Browning.
Ron said I've only got 10 minutes, so we got to make this quick. Board Chairman, members of the board, Barrister Lyons, thank you for being here tonight. My son's in law school, so I just learned that term the other day. He told me I might need, I feel a little bit like that because it's lights on here. I think I'm under interrogation over at the department or something. Left in front of you was this year's Career Focus, and I just, I wanted to point out a couple of things from our department. It is a major project that we work on. It accounts for approximately 30% of our marketing budget in terms of dollars and what it, and what it costs to not only produce but to put out. It goes to all addresses in all five northern counties, so everything within our service area, all the way to the Canadian border, every address gets this piece. I think of particular interest is, if you look on the, on the cover, this is our new esthetician program at NIC Workforce Center out in Post Falls. The folks that are in these pictures and in the program description inside are in that new program because they saw this piece come to their door. We had, was it 11 or 17? Can't remember. I'm going to say 17, Stacy corrects me, but 17 people in that class who said they directly came and enrolled in that program because they...
Secondary is no longer, it's not a luxury. This is, this is a basic need for long-term success and survival, as not only for us as individuals, but for our communities and for our economy and for our area. So, that's really what we look at in terms of competition. We don't mind taking students from those other folks, but really, we want, we want new ones coming through the door. So, how are we doing on time? You okay? We are providing the marketing and materials and support for three major conferences that are coming up. The Pacific Northwest Healthcare Conference, that's a new event designed to really focus on healthcare in the sense that where are the costs controllable? A lot of that is being looked at because of what has been done here at NIC through the wellness program. It really is a model that's being looked at throughout the nation. We're really under the radar. Folks don't realize what a revolutionary program we have here, but there is an event coming up at the end of September, I believe it's the 27th and 28th, we're providing the support for that. I'm sure President Dunlap will talk to you a little more in-depth about the American Technical Education Conference that's coming up. We're helping with that, and also the Emergency Medical Services Conference on November the 2nd and 4th. Everybody's been talking about Sandpoint, of course, we'll play a major role with that. So, Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to stand for any questions that you folks...
up as the best value regardless, for-profit, private, nonprofit, private, public. We are the best value in the Northwest, hands down. You simply can't get, your dollar can't go any further than what it goes here.
And we're getting that word out?
We are every day pounding the street.
Mr. Chair, I might add as well. We recently hired a veterans coordinator within the past two weeks and he's just arrived on board and is doing a fantastic job. In addition, about once a week, maybe once every two weeks, there is a mobile veterans counselor out of Spokane that comes to the NIC campus and provides counseling services for veterans who may have experienced post-traumatic stress syndrome or traumatic brain injury or have other issues that they need some counseling or assistance with. And so we're approaching the accommodation of veterans through a multi-pronged task or a multi-pronged effort, if you will. And the last piece will be the marketing and outreach that Mark talks about.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairs, just very quickly, I want to echo what Ron said about your hire for president. It has been, it's been fun. We've had a great time. And I'd like to thank Jim Perez for his time here. He didn't help me at all with my golf game. I'm as bad as ever. So that on his goals and objectives was left undone. And I really would like to welcome Grayden and Lita to our team. And for Lita, I'm sorry you have to be the rose between two thorns, but I'm glad to see Grayden here because he brings the average height requirement back up close to where it needs to be. So we're happy for that. Thank you.
Short jokes are bad. Any other questions for Mark? See none? Thank you. Grayden, before I call you for your report, obviously you had to go out and buy a new wardrobe. I see you're wearing cardinal colors now. Those wouldn't be allowed in Twin Falls.
Thank you very much. No, they won't, but I got rid of that wardrobe that I was selling.
Thank you. Great. Welcome.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, President Dunlap and other guests here tonight. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to be here. I'm thrilled to be at North Idaho College. I'm thrilled to be in Coeur d'Alene. I'll be more thrilled in about a month when my wife arrives to join me up here as well. It has, as I mentioned at convocation last week, I've been here just about a week and a half. And when I was introduced at convocation, it's often come up that I used to work for that college I now refer to as the Community College in the South. I forget the name. And it was talked about that I had worked there for about 28 years. And in fact, what I said is I'd been in training to become an employee for North Idaho College during that period of time because I've had the interest in coming here for a long time and I'm so grateful to have that opportunity and very excited to be a part of this team. That includes President Dunlap and the senior administrative team. And then I've had a chance to meet a number of the students, meet the student services staff and a number of the faculty this week. And I just feel like I'm in the right place at the right time to be a part of an exciting movement here. I want to, and I should tell you, it kind of culminated today in the day of welcome. We had a chance to serve food to the students outside. And one of the entities in student services thought one of the best ways for people to get to know me was to sponsor a contest called Pin the Hair on the VP. So they had to picture me in a variety of hairdos, none of which worked nearly as well as this one. And students had an opportunity to pin that on. So thank you for that. I'd like to just share with you a couple important pieces of information real quickly. We had a chance to look at enrollment just Monday of this last week. And enrollment, right at the time, I want to share with you, our head count as of Monday was 3.27% down. The good news, the flip side to that is that our FTE was 1.44% up. And so feeling okay about that at the moment, but there are a number of events that will occur over the course of the next two weeks that will certainly have impact on that. Today was the day for dropping for non-payment. Students hadn't, who hadn't been able to pay. This Sunday will be the last day for students to add and drop. Next week, we have the day to drop for non-attendance. We have dual-credit students continuing to be registered. We'll have late-start classes that occur. So that number's certainly going to change over the course of the next two or three weeks. You should also know, I know that you've heard that for a long time, that we're required to report our enrollment to the state after the 10th day. And just recently, that changed. The state board and staff down there has chosen October 15th as the date to report fall semester enrollment. So while you can expect an update in September, our official report will come out at the October board meeting to coincide with what the state has requested as well. And we hope to bring good news to you at that time as well. But wanted to give you just a quick shot of that right now. I was glad that President Dunlap mentioned to you about our veterans' advisor and I've had a chance to work with him a bit and he is truly outstanding. His name is Curly and I want you to see where he got his name from when you see him. He sports a hairdo similar to mine. I also want to just share with you real quickly that one of the tasks that President Dunlap has asked me to chair that I'm thrilled to be a part of is that of an enrollment management task force. And I'll be working side by side with Lita. And we've already been out to a number of places and asked for faculty and staff and students to be a part of that. And we've had a huge number of volunteers who want to be on board. There are three committees that are part of that process. It was already structured but really hadn't moved very far forward to this point. One of those is focused on enrollment. One of those is focused on retention and then certainly one on completion and success. Each of those currently are chaired by a member of the faculty and a member of student services, which makes great sense. And you can bet that that whole task force will be represented by a cross-section of people here on the campus and in the community. We're looking forward to doing good things to continue to get the North Idaho College story out. And that is all I have to share with you tonight. I'd be glad to answer any questions I might.
Questions for Grayden.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Well, I just, Grayden wanted to let you know, in case you don't know, Jerry Beck does watch all of our board meetings.
Oh, good.
And I guess we should just let him know right now what side of the gym you'll be sitting on during basketball season. He just needs to know.
There was not any question about that. I'll be on the NIC side sporting the NIC cup. Thank you for that opportunity.
Any other questions? Yeah, actually, this summer, we had a joint board meeting with the chairs and the president. And the chair from CSI informed me that one of our people is applying for one of your jobs. Boy, I hope you don't hire him. It's always the greatest compliment when your former employer does not want to lose you. So that was good to hear.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. Last but not least, by sure is our brand-new college president, Joe Dunlap.
Mr. Chair, trustees, thank you for hiring me. This has been one of the most exciting experiences of my life, being given the opportunity to come to North Idaho College and work with this fantastic team. And I don't mean just the new hires. If you look across this entire room, we have an absolutely fantastic team here at North Idaho College. And of the over 1,200 community colleges in this country, North Idaho College has to be one of the best-kept secrets in terms of location, in terms of program offerings and in terms of the people who work here. And I'll have you know that tomorrow, my wife and I will be moving across the state line and take up permanent residence in Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. And so I'll be unpacking boxes the rest of this week. I wanted to just update you on a few things that we have going on so you have a better understanding of how we're preparing for this year. On the 19th of September, we will have a retreat for the president's cabinet and the deans. And there are four items on that agenda. The first is the Complete College Idaho Initiative, and Trustee Meyer mentioned that earlier this evening. That particular initiative, over time, will have very significant ramifications for education in Idaho and we need to be prepared for that. There are five main tenets of that program, which include strengthening the pipeline, transforming remediation, structure the organization for success, reward progress and completion, and leverage partnerships. The second item on the retreat agenda is the Voluntary Framework for Accountability, which is a program that was developed by the Association of Community Colleges that is being tested at 58 colleges in the country as we speak and will be available for implementation next week. And what it provides is a common set of data collection metrics that allow us to compare apples-to-apples and oranges-to-oranges. And I've spoken with CSI and CWI and they both are interested in adopting that system as well, which would provide a common structure for reporting for the state. The third item on the retreat is our budget process. And then the fourth is to develop a prioritized list of capital projects, which we will bring back to you. Ron mentioned the Sandpoint Outreach Center and that is going to be an absolutely fantastic operation. The grand opening for our portion of that is November 1st and we will probably take a bus up there for those that are interested in traveling to that grand opening. Max Mendez will be conducting a choir as part of that grand opening. And the auditorium they have in Sandpoint at our facility is absolutely spectacular. In addition, we have space for a science lab in that facility, but we don't have the resources to purchase the equipment for a wet science lab. And so Rayel Anderson is working with a group in Sandpoint led by former Mayor Gretchen Heller to develop a fundraising strategy to go out and raise the revenue so that we will be able to put in place a wet lab in that facility and be able to offer science courses as well. One of the things that I've wanted to make sure that the president's cabinet is up to speed on is being prepared for any type of an emergency. And I've been on a campus where we've had a death of a faculty member, where we've had a main gas line blow and other emergencies. And so I've asked the president's cabinet to take the online Federal Emergency Management Incident Command Structure course. And once that's completed, we will begin doing some tabletop exercises with our security folks so that should we have an emergency, we'll be prepared to respond adequately to that. It was mentioned about the American Technical Education Association Western Regional Conference that will be held in Coeur d'Alene, October 4th and 5th. And Mike Myers is coordinating that, which will draw a number of professional technical educators from throughout the western United States. The keynote speaker is Jane Oates, who is the Assistant Secretary of Labor for Employment and Training Administration. And so that should be a really great event for Coeur d'Alene. Our American Indian Student Alliance Club is sponsoring a golf tournament at Circling Raven Golf Tournament, or excuse me, Golf Club in Worley to develop scholarships for Native Americans. And that's on September 28th. So if anyone's interested in golfing and promoting scholarships for students attending NIC, I would encourage you to participate. And lastly, we will have two focused reports for you at the October and November board meeting. In October, we will have the Economic Impact Study presented, which will demonstrate the economic impact that North Idaho College has in this region. And then in November, we will present the prioritized list of priorities based on programmatic needs for capital construction projects. Mr. Chair, that concludes my report and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Joe. Yes, Ron.
Moments ago, Chairman Arman made reference to Jerry Beck and not wanting to see one of his staff come up here. Well, back in June, I think it was, there were some of us on the board that made a visit to Spokane Community College. And we spoke with approximately 30 different people, including heads of departments and your executive secretary. And without question, every single one of them didn't want you to leave. So I want to thank you for listening to us and accepting the contract rather than listening to the people that used to work for you.
Well, I appreciate that, Trustee Wisselbauer. Also, with regard to Jerry Beck, I'll have you know that he will not be watching this Board of Trustees meeting tonight. I talked to him this afternoon and he's driving back from Hayden, Idaho to his home in Twin Falls. So you don't have to worry, Grayden. You're safe.
Oh, no. I'll bring it up again.
Other questions for Joe?
Just real quick, Mr. Chair. Dr. Dunlap, do you know when the State Board of Education is meeting again? And I think, haven't they met here usually on the phone?
They will be meeting here in December. I don't have with me when the next board meeting is, but I believe it will be in Boise.
October 16th and 17th in Boise.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Mark, appreciate that.
Other questions?
And the December date?
12/13, Wednesday, Thursday.
You can go Christmas shopping. Any other questions? Joe, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your report. Okay, moving on to old business. Second reading for the Professional Services Contract Policies Number 7.01.04. Ron Dorn.
Board Chair, board members, you remember at the first reading, it was suggested that we further examined this policy. And there was a small group, which was Mark Lyons, Trustee Ken Howard, myself. We're going to review this along with some other policies and some other discussions relative to this policy. And out of that meeting, we realized we needed to do quite a bit more work on this and some other policies. So I would recommend, time in concurrence with Trustee Howard, that we table this motion and upon a further review by Trustee Howard and Mick and myself to bring this back at a later date for reading.
Just to sort of follow up on what Ron said, as we started to look at this, there are portions of it that implicate interaction with other policies that we have in place. And quite frankly, some of them are internally inconsistent. So not only, I guess I'd like to make a motion that we table this particular consideration of this particular policy, but after that, I also want to make a motion to form a committee to review, for the purpose of appropriate amendments, the policies concerning the powers and duties of the board and the powers and duties of the president. They're really, in order to do this right, I think they all have to be reviewed in the context of one another. So I guess my first motion is that we table this motion on the policy, on the proposed policy 7.01.04.
So the motions are second?
Myers, second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
And my second motion is to have the Board of Trustees form a committee to review and propose appropriate amendments to policies concerning the powers and duties of the board, and the delegation of powers to the president and duties to the president.
The motions are second. Discussion?
Mr. Chair, what size of committee are you looking at? And is Mr. Lyons going to be on the committee as legal representative? Or were you wanting to fill that role? Or what did you have in mind?
Yeah, no, I'm not going to fill the role of any legal advice.
Just to sort of follow up on what Ron said, as we started to look at this, there are portions of it that implicate interaction with other policies that we have in place. And quite frankly, some of them are internally inconsistent. So not only, I guess I'd like to make a motion that we table this particular consideration of this particular policy, but after that, I also want to make a motion to form a committee to review, for the purpose of appropriate amendments, the policies concerning the powers and duties of the Board and the powers and duties of the President. They're really, in order to do this right, I think they all have to be reviewed in the context of one another. So I guess my first motion is that we table this motion on the policy, on the proposed policy 7.01.04.
So the motions are second.
Myers, second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
My second motion is to have the Board of Trustees form a committee to review and propose appropriate amendments to policies concerning the powers and duties of the Board, concerning and the delegation of powers to the President and duties to the President.
The motions are second.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Chair, what size of committee are you looking at? And is Mr. Lyons going to be on the committee as legal representative? Or were you wanting to fill that role, or what did you have in mind?
Yeah, no, I'm not going to fill the role of any legal advice.
I know, you're free.
Yeah. You know how good free advice is, you know?
You get what you pay for.
That's what you pay for.
That's right. My expectation is that the Board Chair will form a committee, and I would anticipate that it would be somebody from the administration, somebody from the Board of Trustees, and Mark Lyons at least. But I would leave that up to the Chair.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Very good. Moving on to new business. Tab two, appoint clerk of the election. Do we have to do this?
You have to do this. We have to go through this, I don't know, this process again. So you have read this, and I don't remember, because I was pretty new the first time we went through this. But I guess the recommended action is that you appoint the Vice President, who is this Vice President, me?
That's correct.
As the clerk of the election for the upcoming election of the Board of Trustees.
So we need a motion to appoint Ron Dorn as the clerk of the election for the trustee election in November. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Good thing you two did it, because... Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Mr. Chair, before we leave that topic, could we walk through the process, just to remind everybody what it is?
He doesn't know.
Election, there are three positions open, the filing...
I guess it's A, B, and C. And one of the questions that's come up on that, which is really interesting, since we don't elect by district, we asked ourselves the question, why we have this? I mean, I don't have an answer at the time, but it'd be interesting, moreover, why we tie it to seats since it's a general election. But again, I don't have an answer. It's just a question that came up as we've gotten more familiar with the process. Let me call them applications. Are due in Friday by 5:00 into my office. That's a change from the past with the consolidation of the election. You used to be able to turn them at the county clerk's office or our office, but they have to come in to the college's office Friday. And then I have approximately, to sign them, I have to sign them and turn them into the clerk, but I have approximately seven days to do that. I'll say I won't wait seven days, but since I'm not going to be there Friday, the ones that come in after today will be signed when I get back on Tuesday, and we will take them down, and we will turn them in. But we have that long to do that. And then the election will be held, I guess it's November 6th, which is my birthday, so that'll be a lot of fun.
It's two days after my birthday.
Two days after your birthday, and...
You'll both be older after that.
And we'll both be older after that and a little wiser. And once that's certified and taken care of, then I think the last time the new trustees started at the November Board meeting, I will have to swear them, and there's a one or two-page process that we go through to swear on the new board members, and that will be it for a couple of years. True.
Yeah, the other thing I would want to highlight is it's a nonpartisan election. And although it occurs during the general election, I think it's a separate ballot from...
It's a separate...
Because it is a separate...
Right, it's a separate ballot.
Flavor to it.
Three slots up?
Slots up.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Tab three, official summer enrollment. Jim, back up.
Chairman Arman, members of the Board, President Dunlap, I come before you tonight, charged with the presentation of the enrollment for the recently completed summer. And perhaps this is my last task, because my capacity here is interim. Before I give you some of the numbers and some of the details on this, I just want to caution you a little bit that while summer enrollment is certainly part of the academic year, it's a unique element in and of itself. So the caution is not to draw too tight of a comparison to the regular academic year. And the picture isn't as pretty as we would like it to be, but I also want to inform you that NIC is not the only one that experiencing this kind of enrollment. Our sister institutions within the state of Idaho, some of the institutions in the neighboring states, and even on a national trend, are experiencing this type of downturn. So if we want to remain optimistic, we can say that perhaps this is an indication that the economy is on a little bit of a nut swing, because traditionally, when the economy is doing well, people go to work. When the economy is not doing so well, people go to school. And so that directly affects enrollment in some of the colleges and universities. For this past summer, summer of 2012, we can compare to the previous summer, 2011. And those numbers alone, like I said, it's not a pretty picture. On a head count, from 2011 to 2012, there was a reduction, there was a loss of about 18%, a little bit more than 18%. In FTE, there was a reduction of 20.3%. In numbers, we lost 413 in head count and 385 in FTE. Now, that in itself is a reduction, especially when you compare to the previous three years. From 2008 to 2011, NIC was in an upsurge. During that time, from 2008 to 2011, the head count increased 75%. And FTE increased 83%. So when all of a sudden, from one year to the next, you see a decline, that's a little bit hard to swallow. But again, as I indicate, this isn't exclusive to NIC. Now, there's a couple of people here in the audience that I need to recognize, because they're the ones that helped, they crunched these numbers. Kylene Lloyd, research analyst from Student Services, and Ann Lewis, institutional research, are the ones that helped, primarily responsible for crunching these numbers. So when they presented these to me, and we looked at those, the three of us sat down together and we, as they say, went inside the numbers and tried to figure out if there were some variables, if there were some factors there that may have contributed to this. And keep in mind also, what I said, the summer is a unique element of the academic year. The one piece that stands out immediately is that it's a very short session. It's only eight weeks. So students really need to have their stuff together, so to speak, in order to be successful during that time. Well, some of the things we were able to indicate, first of all, is that very few classes during the summer had wait lists, including English and math. And those students that were put on those wait lists eventually did become enrolled. Most of them did become enrolled. So waitlist was, for all intents and purposes, a non-issue. Probably the big piece that affected enrollment was that, for the first time, the Pell Grant, the financial aid was not available to students during the summer. So they had to find other means by finance, to finance the classes that they were taking during the summer. Also, the drop for non-attendance took place for the first time. And because it's such a short session, the drop for non-attendance and the drop for non-payment occurred very close together. And some of the students were confused a little bit with that and had difficulty dealing with that. Also, the other thing we were able to determine is that in previous years, many of the students who enrolled at NIC during the summer were students from other major universities and colleges. They would come home for the summer, they decided to take a class here at NIC. That didn't happen this year. Almost all of the students that were enrolled at NIC this summer were continuing, NIC students that had been here during the regular academic year. So we lost a portion of enrollment that traditionally would help us make an enrollment boost during the summer. So all in all, you can see that some of the elements that contributed to downturn in that enrollment. But I'm confident that we'll be able to manage that. You heard Grayden talk about the Enrollment Management Task Force that he will be chairing, the work that he will be doing alongside Dr. Burns and the faculty and the staff. A lot of good work on that was started last spring, and it's nice to see that that work has been brought back up to the forefront here at the start of this academic year, and the energy is there to continue in that good work. So I am confident that with that work, and particularly the task force, NIC will be able to get a good, firm grasp on this enrollment situation and deal with it in the best appropriate manner. That really is what I have for you tonight, unless you have some questions, and I'm sure Kylene and Ann would help you answer any questions you might have.
Yes. Jim, I suspect to some extent, this was expected. We've all sort of expected that the phenomenal growth that we experienced would not continue indefinitely, and we would level off and indeed maybe even taper off. But what's important, I think, partially to us, is trying to take a look and see what kind of trends are developing so that we can look down the road and make informed judgments about what we might expect. And when I see that the head count dropped 18% in the FTE, 23% in the summer, but so far, it's been a 3.2% for the fall, and as I understand it, the PTE actually went up by 1.44%. And I'm wondering if you have enough information now that you could help us start to formulate some scenarios that we might expect. And one of the things that I think we heard of before was there were some changes in the Pell Grants, not just in that they weren't available this summer, but there are also some limitations being built in so that the financial resources that would be available to students are changing, and they're less than they were in the past. So I'm wondering if there's anything that you can help us with from an overall view to help us look down the road, or what do you expect's going to happen? Do you think that we're going to be leveling off, or do you have any insight into that?
Well, again, this is, like I said, this is a trend that's happening across the country. And so I think what the work that the task force will be doing is to zero that in specifically to NIC in terms of the course offerings, the online, the venues by which the offers, the courses are being offered online in the evening. We talked about some of the branch campuses, the work that the classes that they provide in the outlying areas. Financial aid also is something that will have to be looked at in terms of the processes that they use. By the way, our financial aid office recently was, I think you're aware of this, financial aid office was recently removed from the provisional probation list. That is testament to the good work that the current Director, Joe Beckon, and all his staff have done to take their financial aid office off the probation list. So that in itself is going to send a message to potential students and current students that the processes that are in place for financial aid are there now to the benefit of the students. The granting aids also is a process that's being looked at, and how those are distributed, how quickly those are awarded to deserving students, and the work that the foundation is doing also to develop more scholarships. All of those things will help in terms of the enrollment, particularly where it indicates that there's another possible funding source for students, because that, again, is the national trend, is that tuition and fees continue to increase, and the available resources for funding continue to decrease. I think NIC has managed to keep that, those two comparative figures at a minimum, but on a national level, again, that is, the gap is widening there in terms of the cost versus the available resource for it. So I think, again, the great work that these people will do is going to contribute wholeheartedly to being able to manage the enrollment in a better fashion. I don't know, is there anything else?
Mr. Perez, first of all, thank you for what you've done to contribute to NIC and coming in and spending these few months with us and keeping us going in the right direction. Thank you for that.
My pleasure.
And I hope that, I don't know what your plans are, if you're just now, you're going to retire for the 100th time or whatever you're doing, but you're always welcome back here. Joe will find something for you to do.
We already have.
Have you?
So Jim will be a frequent visitor. He's got some work to do for us.
Very good. Well, I certainly appreciate the level of analysis that they've compiled, because it's very helpful for us to just kind of sort all through this and understand, rather than just tearing enrollments down for the summer, and the fact that you've tried to really, really pull back the layers. I was curious, though, have we talked to ASNC at all? Because I often find that students have a lot of very good input, and, you know, they have a perspective as well. And I'd be interested to hear ASNC's point of view on enrollment trends. Just food for thought.
And I'm sure that that's something that the task force will take into consideration, absolutely. Not only our current, but hopefully with some of our past students and the experience that they've had, and how we can continue to increase the services. Because I'm a firm believer that it's one thing to be able to bring students here, but if you don't have quality services, they're not going to stay. And worse yet, they're going to go out and give a bad rap on their experience here. And so we have to take care of our students, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jim? Dr. Perez, thank you very much for your service to us, and we look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you, and I just want to express my appreciation to you for having the confidence to allow me to have this wonderful opportunity. Thank you.
Next up, new business, tab four, first reading action item, Head Start Job Descriptions.
Good evening, Chairman, Trustees, and Dr. Dunlap, and Mr. Lyons. This is the semi-annual update for Head Start. My name is Beth Ann Fuller, and I'm the Director of North Idaho College Head Start. And NIC being the grantee agency for our program following the federal performance standards requires that the grantee agency through the Board of Trustees approve annually several documents and policies that we have, including tonight's job descriptions, personnel policies, our recruitment and enrollment policy, and our criteria for prioritization and the selection policy that we have for enrolling children and families into our program. So in terms of the tab and the things that we provided for you to look at tonight, with our job descriptions, there were no major changes to the job descriptions that we had in existence. We added to all of our job descriptions, planned work, knowing that flexibility is required to meet the unique needs of the Head Start program and its participants. And we felt we needed to add that line to give people a sense that we have families that come from many different needs and backgrounds, and they may have different times that they need us to provide services, to give people a sense that it's not always traditional hours. We added a job description, which was a combination of our family advocate and an assistant teacher position that we currently hired in St. Mary's. We added a job description which combined the family advocate and classroom teachers, and that was for our Kootney Head Start Center here in Coeur d'Alene. We added a job description for a facility technician, which was formerly a job description that was called maintenance worker, that we did not have a person in. And then we renamed our center assistant at our central office to a program assistant due to the different program duties that that person happens to perform that's slightly different than our outlying centers. So that was the job description for it. Would it be your pleasure if I stop and ask for questions, or just go through each one?
We'll just go through them all.
Okay, great. And then with our personnel policies, the changes to our personnel policies basically were no significant changes, other than we added that in dismissals of an employee with notice, that we'd also add that we would also give them the effective date. An overtime flex time policy, we aligned that with North Idaho College to... An overtime flex time policy, we aligned that with North Idaho College to especially the, striking the language about compensatory time. In our 5.03, or on page 21, on cellphone use, we added a statement about cellphone use at work cannot be intrusive to either their duties or to the center operations. And those were the major pieces that we changed on personnel policies. Then, moving to our recruitment and enrollment policy, what our program is attempting to do and getting very close to having it finished is making sure that all of our policies are separated from our procedures. And so what we have is a, an old recruitment enrollment policy, and I say old because it included all of the procedures for enrolling families and recruiting them. So we separated the two, and the document then that you would need to approve would be the new recruitment enrollment policy, which is now just page one of one, and that we recruit and enroll eligible children and families that can benefit the most from our program services, and as currently prioritized by the Office of Head Start. North Idaho College Head Start Policy Council annually establishes criteria of prioritization for an enrollment point system, which provides a method of determining our eligibility. North Idaho College Head Start Policy Council and then North Idaho College Board of Trustees would then approve this criteria. And then the criteria itself, it's quite an extensive operation when the parents come together with some community representatives and they look at the point system for which we choose the families that can benefit the most from our services. And firstly, what they do is look at a comprehensive community assessment to see if we're serving the right number of families and in the right places. Currently, we're in all five northern counties. We now have eight sites. Last year, when I reported this to you, we had seven sites, but we've now expanded to be able to take on six enrollment slots at the North Idaho College Children's Center. And in conjunction with this criteria committee, we looked at where we should be serving the most. We currently have the largest waiting list still in our post-falls area. So we were able to, not only on one hand, start a brand, not brand new, I would say, but a new collaboration effort with the Coeur d'Alene School District, and currently the Fernan Developmental Preschool for Coeur d'Alene School District will be moving into the Harding Family Center building and doing a full inclusion program with our Cootney Head Start, which will be fabulous, and we're very excited about it. What will happen then is that will allow us to be able to transfer slots of children to post-falls to be able to serve more children in post-falls. So every year, it's fluid in terms of where should we be serving and how and who should we be serving. So the changes that were made or suggested to be made to the criteria to prioritize families into our program is that we would, any formal referral from an agency or professional would give families ten points. Our verified income are based on our current federal poverty guidelines on number one is the same, and the poverty guidelines usually every year go up, and we're furnished with that poverty guideline. And so we establish a certain amount of points based on how much under the poverty guideline each family that's, is actually applying for our program. So in age, we still prioritize four-year-olds, although we serve three and four-year-olds. And currently, the parents and community reps, based especially on high wait lists, have prioritized that four-year-old should, if they're not going to ever get a chance to be in Head Start, would not be as ready for school. So the children that are three years old are, if they have other verifiers, still get a chance to get into our program, but you can see on number two that four-year-olds get an additional twenty-eight points. Verified disabilities, we just added wording on according to the State Department of Education guidelines, and then on formal referrals that, from an agency or a professional. Number six, we just crossed out foster family because we're really actually enrolling a foster child into the program, so we just clarified that. Currently, just to give you a statistic, we are going to start on September 10. That'll be our first day of school. Everybody's preparing, and we've already accepted over thirty foster children into our program. We're about at seventy-five percent enrollment at this point, and so we're still accepting about another twenty-five percent of our children, and we've already accepted that many. Family violence, including child abuse and neglect, is a, if they're experiencing that, is a ten, ten points. Parents working toward obtaining a high school GED or diploma was one that our families really felt was a huge stressor for families if they didn't have a GED in terms of being able to get a job or obtain a job or retain a job. So they added that as a ten-point piece. Substance abuse was a five-point piece, and it really has been such a significant issue for some families that they felt that that should have more weight, so they gave that ten points. Parents incarceration, and they've added and/or returning from incarceration to the family, was a five-point criteria. Parents deployed in military service and/or returning from military service was one that they wanted to add. We used to have just deployed parent as a point, as five points. And then, and you'll see a strike out there because we were able to incorporate in eleven. Number thirteen would be a new criteria where we've added a criteria for just additional household stressors, which could include chronic health issues for a family member, death of a family member within the household, mental health issues, and those are just examples of post-traumatic stress, depression, and other mental health issues that could cause stress on a family. Parents working multiple jobs or working and going to school was one that was noted often with our families as a high-stress issue for our area, and then also unemployment. So those specific pieces were categorized into, if you're having any of these additional household stressors, that we would add five points to the selection criteria for those families. And that, I think, is it.
Questions for Beth Ann?
That's Kristi.
Beth Ann, it's always a pleasure to work with you, and it's, I think it's a wonderful thing that North Idaho College could be part of this partnership with you. I just had a question on the prioritizing. Oftentimes, you must have families that come up with the same score. How do you determine how you're going to select the child?
Sometimes the families that have the same score, we will have to take a look at that and take into effect other stressors possibly, get an idea of like, where did those points come from, and just make a choice depending on, okay, so how can we make the most impact? What can we do that would impact this family and help them towards self-sufficiency? So if this family, for example, we might have a foster child that also has a suspected disability as opposed to a family that has other stressors, we just have to staff it and think and talk and maybe call back and ask for some clarification of where referrals may have come from and what the, you know, what, sometimes we'll find that after we ask questions, it may be that some of those stressors are, were further in the past than they are for some other families.
I'm sure it's tough.
It has to be within that year, but sometimes there, you know, it could have been somebody that, you know, is, it's been almost a year now, and there's other families who have somebody that has, has somebody that's still currently dealing with that issue.
Then just one other question. I'm sure that's tough to have to sort through that. Just off the top of your head, I don't expect you to have the, but just any idea of how many children you've been able to give your immunizations to this year for the start of school?
Our immunization record was way higher than the actual Idaho State immunization record, and I think it's because we help, we don't just say you've got to have these shots before you come to us. We give those resources for where they can get the shots, where they can get them for free, where and how and exactly what shots it looks like to us based on their iris record or based on their shot record they bring us from the physician that they actually are still needing. Kind of just that little bit of extra information for the family so that they can follow through and get it and get it to us.
What I recall is the funding really didn't cover everyone that needed it. There was always a percentage that we were not able to take care of, and that's heartbreaking. But I was just curious if that's fine. I know we get a report on that, so, thank you.
Other questions for Beth Ann?
Excuse me. You have a policy committee that goes over most of these or all of these changes? Is that correct?
The policy council is elected parents and then also community representatives representing a certain amount of families, depending on how many families we're serving in those areas. And there's about twenty-five members on the, on the policy council. They go through a training, and I know you've been involved in that, and I really appreciate your involvement in our governing board training. So they get a training on understanding how they have some, some decision-making and approvals and review of things, as well as do the Board of Trustees.
And some of these changes that you've, that have come up this year, have they been recommended by your policy committee then?
Specifically, the job descriptions and personnel policies went to our policy council, and they approved that in July. And then recruitment enrollment policy and the prioritization selection policy were developed in May and they, or in April, and they approved them in May.
Do you also get information from the federal government with regard to fundamental policies and provisions that you have to have in these different policies that you've got?
Yeah, definitely. And an example of that would be like for our criteria for selection, the federal government gives us specifically the criteria for, example, how many families that we can serve that, I'll give you one, is that we can serve up to ten percent of our families can be over the income guidelines. If there are stressors and other criteria points, give them the more points than another family. And we don't go over that amount, and we usually stay much under that just because we have such a high waiting list. Typically, our over-income families are families that have several other stressors, and usually are our children with disabilities that receive points for already having an individual education plan set to, because there have been determined that they have barriers to their learning. And so there are specific criteria such as we need to prioritize homeless families, and we need to prioritize families with SSI, and foster children. All three of those categories automatically qualify income-wise as zero income on our income grid, and we'd get that maximum points for that.
One of the reasons I'm asking these questions are, if we're asked to approve certain provisions, changes to existing policies and procedures, it's helpful to understand the process that you've gone through to bring them before us, whether they've been reviewed by a local group of interested citizens and participants, whether it's something that's been offered for inclusion by some general policy and that sort of thing. And that's the reason I'm, I guess I'm wondering, most of these things that you've brought in this change, has this come from your policy committee?
They do come from the policy committee, and they also come depending on, like, an example would be our job descriptions. We have a staff development committee, which is elected staff members from each different job category, depending on how many persons are in that job category, how many they have as far as representatives. And they look at job descriptions, and they develop anything that they think should be a change or a revision or an addition to job descriptions, and they submit that to us. And then we also have the Human Resource Department at North Idaho College look at our job descriptions and personnel policies and such, and make sure that they are in alignment.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? This is a first reading. We actually have the ability to take it to a second reading, or we can vote on it tonight. Is there a pleasure to the board?
I'd prefer that we stick with our policy of, yeah, taking it through a second reading.
All right. Thank you very much.
Information items, budget development timeline for fiscal year 2014, Ron Dorn.
You have two things in the packet. One is a color chart that tries to lay out the budget process. I think we've discussed that before, but some of the background, I think, to where we are now, we've analyzed this year's budget relative to enrollment figures, and I made a report to the President's Cabinet earlier this week on those figures. We will do another one next week, because as you heard earlier, the drop, another one of the drop points will have been accomplished Monday, and I think that'll give us a far better picture of where we are this year. That budget information will be used as a base for the fiscal year 14 budget, for the process we go through to build that. In October, another thing that the President's Cabinet will see and the Board Finance Committee will see is a three-year projection model of where, based on the trends, you'll see a three-year history for eleven, ten, eleven, and twelve, and you'll have a projection for fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, with thirteen, fiscal year thirteen acting as a budget year. And we will project income, we will project expenses out over that period of time, so you can get an idea, as we look at the budget for fourteen, how comfortable we all are with that, with the projections out into the future. I'm going to start with a three-year model, and if that, if that is something that it bodes a pleasure of the President's Cabinet and the Board, then I will extend it out to a five-year model. But we will have that available in October as part of the budgeting process. We plan, again, depending on what happens next week, that will help us develop the basis of how we go forward with fiscal year 14. But I intend right now, after talking a little bit to the President, that at least on the MNO side of our budget, we're going to do some kind of modified zero-based budgeting on our MNO budget for next year. And we're going to take it a piece at a time. We're going to do it on MNO, and then maybe look at another section the following year. But I think we'll have a lot more information when we actually bring this 14 budget back or start the process of deciding what we need in revenue expenditures for 14. And this is, again, kind of a guidance. We have already started a lot of that, obviously, some background data collection and the modeling. So I think we're a little bit farther ahead than we were last year, and getting a lot of help provided out of the, out of the Profex budgeting system, which was our new system. With that, I could answer.
Questions for Ron?
Seeing none?
Thank you very much.
Last up is Board Chair Report, and I truly do not have anything other than just welcome to all the new faces here tonight. It's a pleasure to see everyone. I've heard great things from a lot of people on campus, so keep it up. And with that, I'll open it to good of the order. Anybody have any comments? Judy?
Two updates for my fellow board members. One on the organization I belong to called Idaho Business Coalition for Education Excellence. They finally figured out to shorten it to Idaho Business for Education, and you might remember, that's a statewide leadership group for business folk, and they'll be meeting in September, which then I'll report back to you. One of my goals is to get a new president there, so always meet in Boise, in that Boise-centric world that we keep talking about, because I think it's important for the business community to realize, particularly as we talk tonight, what's ahead for community colleges in that role. colleges in that role with the business community here in Idaho. The second topic has to do with sign update because we, as a board, had launched the monument sign part of our signing process. Those construction drawings will be with pen and ink or the CAD program, whatever it takes to get those done, so that construction can yet begin this fall. We've been working on this for a long time and it shall happen before the snow flies. The other part of the signing was not just monument signs at Hubbard and River, but then wayfinding signs. That part of the process is a little bit slower and more complicated, it seems, and I think the administration will be working on making that happen. We have encouraged the administration to look at trying to include the wayfinding sign site preparation in the current paving and earthmoving that's going on for the parking paving and new landscaping for our new higher ed campus area. In working on the design layout, it was interesting yesterday, I should update you that standing at the wayfinding site at Hubbard, where we're trying to get a bigger sign eventually to help folks find their way around campus, not only for our institution, but the University of Idaho and LCSE, the wastewater treatment plant supervisor Sid Frederickson came by and talked about what we were doing and wanted to be sure we didn't get in his territory and we're sure we're not going to. But he did highlight to us an opportunity to do some sharing of their resources, which would be wastewater, for irrigation purposes. And so I would highlight to you-
Treated wastewater.
Treated wastewater. Oh, you're fussy about that, okay. But coincidentally, our board and staff, on behalf of the board, will be working on the annexation agreement with the city of Coeur d'Alene, which I think comes about, I think in the next month or so. And in that annexation agreement was a guiding principles, I think Christie, you were still on the board and maybe Mick when we worked on guiding principles for the education quarter. And one of those principles is sustainability and integration of the wastewater treatment plant, which would be development that we do should consider options for sustainability, including creative approaches to integrate, it says here, but we could put in irrigate the existing and future buildings that we have going on in our campus. So I wanted to highlight those new and unfolding and as you pointed out before, Ron, everything we touch leads to three more things before we get there. I think as a board, probably direction to staff to be sure to work with the wastewater treatment plant. And he, Sid Frederickson, the director, said it's always complicated because he thinks he has good ideas, but sometimes the DEQ doesn't. So there are a lot of ripples to be addressed. But clearly, as a board, for responsibility of what we've said we would do with the city and for fiscal efficiency, I think looking at those irrigation issues at least for either out of the river and/or in combination with the wastewater treatment plant might be something to keep looking at. And thinking about the sign and the logo we have, I was thinking about Philippe's presentation tonight, here we go again, we have a logo that will be going on that sign. We should be talking to our folks about ways to craft that within our operations. So by next month, surely we will have construction drawings and bids and progress being happening on this phantom monument sign that will be in place before the snow falls.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like Judy to highlight the fact how much you've brought the cost down from the original proposal. And that's really due to your efforts and you and Ron and your work on this project. And I know it's tremendous, the amount that you brought the cost down. Maybe you could share that.
Thank you. It's a blessing and a curse when you're in the world of development, you know some of these things. You have to blend private enterprise with what institutions do. But I think that is part of what we, as a board, can do is get some of the resource people to our college and then help the administration manage our consultants. It's good to have consultants, but it's still us that hired them and it's us that needs to figure out how to be cost-effective. And it's every day, all day, that we spend doing it and I'm sure you do too. Thanks, Christie.
Well, I guess what I wanted to also highlight, Judy, was if you remember, the original proposal for the signs was, I think, $150,000 for-
$65 for one.
$165 for one. And it was hard for people to picture, even though it was beautiful, it was hard for people to swallow and-
That was actually for two signs. It was one on each side.
Okay, but now we have two locations. Under yours and Judy's proposal and the work you've done, we have two locations and the cost is much less. I don't remember exactly, it was under $100,000?
Well, we'll see on the bids for construction, but clearly, when Ron and I were looking at this, it wasn't just one monument sign at, or even two, at Hubbard. Now we've reduced it to one monument sign and probably a bench that'll be part of the bidding, as well as signs at River, because remember, we found out with this, we didn't have the river entrance. All of a sudden, River came along and this has much more traffic. We're learning as we go and that's where we'll need another wayfinding sign as we learn how the traffic flows. So I suspect we'll be talking with all of you folk about how to make this happen and the blend between the Cadillac version and the Volkswagen version will be the challenge.
Yeah, well, good work. And Mr. Chair, I had two items, if I may. Okay, the first one, first, I'd like to congratulate School District 271, their administration and their Board of Trustees on the bond. That's a wonderful thing that's happening. Mr. Lyons works directly with them as well. And how exciting for our community and for our children that those buildings will be remodeled, desperately needed to be done. So that's a wonderful thing. The other thing, I was approached or called by County Clerk Cliff Hayes's staff a while back and he came across a document and I keep meaning to get it to Mark, but thanks to Clerk Hayes, it's a historical document belonging to NIC and it's really the incorporation of the college when the community came together and said, "We want a community college." And he found it somewhere in his massive vault and he thought we might like to have that. And so I do have it and I will get it to Mark and I think Mark talked about maybe having it framed and put it in our historical building, the Fort Sherman Building. And so I'd like to thank him for thinking of us and not just tossing that. It's going to be a nice addition. And that's it.
Any other comments? If not, we adjourn.